All right, my phone says six o'clock, so I'm gonna call the, uh, meeting to order. Tonight's our, uh, Tuesday, September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five Long Lake Township Planning Commission Meeting. Um, first of all, invite everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, made in this law, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we get a roll call, please?
Murphy?
Here.
Holton?
Here.
Figuera?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Bud?
Here.
Wagner?
Here.
For shade.
Here. Uh, next is approval of the agenda. Is there any additions or corrections? Not all. Take a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda is written.
Support.
Moved by Max and supported by Sherry to approve the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Agenda's approved. Conflict of interest statement. Does anybody have a conflict with tonight's business? Please state so. Seeing none, move on to public comment. First period for public comment. No takers? All right, we'll move on to approval of minutes from our August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five meeting. Are there any changes or edits we need? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve these minutes.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Sherry and a second from Tim to approve the minutes. Is there any other discussion? Uh, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The minutes are approved. All right, um, we have now postponed business, so we're up to our first item, a public hearing. This is for zoning ordinance amendment oh-nine dash two-five dash oh-three. It's a proposal to amend zoning ordinance number one oh-nine, section two-point-seven, section three-point-two, section four-point-two-eight, and articles seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and seventeen to regulate accessory dwelling units and create standards and design requirements for eligible properties. Uh, I'll ask, uh, Cody to give us a presentation about that, please.
Yeah, can do. Uh, just to give a little recap history of how this came in front of you, um, the earliest I remember hearing about it was February of twenty-twenty-four, but it's also listed in the master plan to address ADUs. Um, there was some more discussion on it in the fall of twenty-four, um, by commissioners. So we performed a neighboring community analysis to see how folks around us are handling ADUs. Uh, ADUs were then put to an ad hoc committee in the winter of twenty-five with a draft, uh, version one for full commission discussion in the spring of twenty-five. Uh, discussion and review by the full commission happened during the spring and summer of twenty-five. And then, um, we performed another analysis for our zoning district conformity, which showed, um, parcels that would be eligible for ADUs in each zoning district and the percentage. That was also the summer. And then, uh, after much discussion, we had a second draft, which is version two, which is before you tonight here for the public hearing, um, that we're talking about now. This draft had been sent to legal for review. It has gone largely unchanged from the previous times that we've looked at it. The only, um, addition that I will call out, so everything that we had in our, um, draft ordinance language was approved by legal. The only addition we made is, um, in design requirements, which is the third, um, section, under size requirements, which is three-B and then three-B-three, states accessory dwelling units shall be subject to the size requirements of this section herein and shall not be governed by the principal dwelling size requirements applicable in each zoning district. So what's that referring to is in your packets, you see the, um, general restrictions and regulations for each zoning district, and there's areas where it says minimum floor area, nine-hundred-and-sixty square feet, minimum livable floor area, twenty-four by twenty-four. Those are all pertaining to principal dwelling units. So instead of going into each of those sections and changing how that section is set up and adding a special place for ADUs, we just listed in the ADU section that ADUs are applicable to the size requirements that we discussed previously with the attached and detached having separate, um, requirements each. So it's just a, um, efficient way of making sure that the reader's understanding that the applicable size requirements are listed above and not in each individual zoning district. So that's the only change from, uh, the previous meeting, which we've discussed, which I believe was in July. So, um, I'm available if anybody has questions or discussions. Can everybody hear me okay? You're getting a lot of feedback. Okay, perfect.
Thanks, Cody. Um, I guess there's not really an applicant, so we can, we don't need comments or explanations for the applicant, but, um, question discussion by commissioners before we open the public hearing. Anybody got any thoughts, comments?
Okay. Um, I have reached out to some neighboring townships in the past couple of weeks and talked to the planners and supervisors and so on, and I know that there've been a number of people who've expressed concerns about being, you know, basically doubling the number of houses in our township and being overrun with tiny houses. Um, the feedback that I've gotten is that there have been very few requests for ADUs in the other townships in our area that have allowed for them. Um, Fife Lake Township, actually, their supervisor told me they changed their ordinance to make it more attractive, and they still only had one application. I think East Bay Township has had six applications. So I think that, um, you know, while the concerns come from a valid place, I think in reality, when people look at the expense and the hassle and the long-term implications of putting an ADU on their property, it turns out to be a lot less attractive than, than they might have thought at the beginning.
All right, anybody else wanna talk before we hear from public?
Well, I would agree. Uh, I spoke with a few people and, uh, found the same thing. And I also wanted to say, I thi- I think what was put together, put together here by Cody was put together very well and very well researched and puts us on par with maybe even better than some of the others that are out there. So I, I wanna thank you for the work that you did to get us to this point. Go.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna second that, Cody. Um, the East Bay Township ordinance has been kind of held as a model of an excellent ordinance, and they've asked, in conversations with Cody, Cody is probably too modest to say this, but they actually want to imitate some of the provisions that we have proposed in ours to make theirs better.
I guess, yeah, I'm, for my own purposes, I've talked to others, well, um, nobody from Grand Charters County, but Emmett County, Beer Creek Township, near Potoski. Um, I think Emmett County's ordinance is a county-wide ordinance. I think their zoning is kinda set up that way, but, um, the supervisor in Beer Creek, he, I was talking to him and just his, his initial, um, descrip- descrip- description of it was that they don't all, also, they don't get a lot of applications for that. So, um, they have it, they, it's available, but they don't see a lot of them. And when I did look at their ordinance, it, it, it is, there's similarities to ours, so I, I think we're on the right path with what we're proposing, so. All right, well, we can, at this time, open the public hearing to public comment, um, on this topic of accessory dwelling units. So if anybody would like to add commentary, now's your chance. Tina?
Yeah, did I just call on you? Um, Heidi, do you have my address memorized yet? One zero, one zero, one two zero, Deer Pass, South. Um, Tina Allen. So I only have a couple little things. One is, um, Dan and I had a conversation because I've been to the township board a couple times, um, talking about our neighborhood and what happened with short-term rentals and how it changes the flavor of the neighborhood when you have these short-term rentals because there's people coming and going that are not your neighbors, right? So, and I was asked, how can you be against short-term rentals and for accessory dwelling units? And I explained that those are very, I want housing for people. I want housing for nurses, I want housing for everybody who's taking care of me as I age, right? Um, but what I, so there, I wanted to explain that, but what I kind of have an issue with here is you, thirty days is really short. Thirty days still changes my neighborhood. Thirty days still doesn't allow me to look up who's living in that house and if they have a, anything against them, right? I don't get to know that person. I looked around nationally, I went beyond our community, and ninety days is actually a pretty standard for accessory dwelling units because then you can get a traveling nurse, you can get, there's a lot of people that you can still serve with that ninety days. Thirty days is literally the day that it's considered a short-term rental if it's thirty days. So over thirty days is one day different than a short-term rental. So I guess I'd like you to consider that. And then the other thing is really more for Cody and Matt. The other thing with the short-term rentals that we ran into in our neighborhood is we have deed restrictions that don't allow them, but because the township gives, um, a permit for a short-term rental, it becomes really confusing to the applicant because they don't get it. And now we just went and sued four families, well, LLCs, um, and we won on all of them, so they're all stopping. But, um, because we have wording in our deed restrictions, so I don't, we know there's not a whole lot you can do about that, but with short-term rentals, we've talked about at least having a paragraph or something that they can use that says, you probably should, before you spend, because, you know, short-term rental is cheaper to do because it's in your, whatever you already have, but instead of sending eighty thousand dollars on this little, you know, other building, you might wanna make sure that your homeowner association or your deed restrictions allow that. Um, so that was that. And then the only other thing was on the, I know that, you know, I sat by Pete Springsteen before, and when you talked about the, um, detached, um, limit of nine-hundred-and-sixty square feet, it's probably here, but I probably missed it. If that includes a garage or not, and if it does, then that's like really, really tiny dwelling unit, so that would be another thing to consider if you, make sure you call out that it's without a garage if they want one on a detached. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tina.
Probably got mine address memorized. Chris Crew, thirty-sixteen Collier Road. I agree completely about the duration of an ADU. So thirty days seems a little short. Um, somebody could have a family that rents for thirty days and bring multiple families in and out during that thirty days. So you could have one family for one week, one family for another week, and you could get by on a short-term version of it and make it look like a short-term rental instead of an, uh, an ADU. Secondly, the, the same kind of comment about the, Pete having lots of acreage and wanting to build another home on his acreage, if, he'd be forced to essentially split it or live in a tiny home, essentially, nine-hundred-and-seventy square feet if he wanted to do that. With his size of his lot, theoretically, he could split it, he could have a larger home on it. It would seem that we should be able to allow larger-sized homes with properties that have enough property to comply with the two homes that you would put on there. So if one home was three thousand square feet, you had forty acres, theoretically, you could put another three thousand square foot home on that remaining twenty acres. Similarly, if there were two parts, so if there was a parcel that had two-hundred feet worth of lake furniture, in theory, you could split it and have a hundred foot and a hundred foot. So without pushing people into machinations and additional legal costs to do something to get a second home on their property, perhaps considering that if the lot is already large enough to support two properties and still comply with the rules of a low, low-density residential, that that might be something you could consider doing instead. That's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Chris. Matt, you wanna? Seeing no other public here to comment, we will close the public hearing at, uh, what do we got here? Six sixteen. I guess I failed to give you a time when I opened it. Okay. Sounds about right. All right. Deliberation, more questions, comments?
I strongly agree with the, um, thirty-day limit. I don't think that's enough. I think ninety would be much more appropriate. I originally lobbied for a year, but that would, um, take this out of the realm for traveling nurses and so on, and I think that's an important, uh, area to consider. But I think ninety days would be much more appropriate than thirty. I think it would make it much more acceptable to the community, too.
I guess I'm a little fuzzy on the whole thirty-day, is that the minimum amount of time that it's to be considered a ADU?
So the thirty-day number came from, uh, the desire not to allow short-term rentals in an ADU. So currently, our short-term rental is a police power ordinance, meaning this commission doesn't have control over it. So the board set the short-term rental day limit at thirty days, and so we, piggybacking off of that, set anything more than thirty days would not be considered a short-term rental based on their ordinance that the board had passed previously. Currently, the zoning ordinance, which we do have some, uh, influence on, has no language regarding short-term rentals, so we don't have anything to reference inside of our zoning ordinance. So we are referencing a, or, a police power ordinance that's set by the board. Uh, we do have the ability to pick a different number if we can justify the reason. Um, if ninety days is more amicable, we can type up language reflecting that, or a hundred and eighty days, or forty days, or whatever they agreed upon, we just have to have a reasoning
We can't just say they can be short-term rentals?
Which is what we currently do.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, it's legally, so it has thirty days as ordinance number one seventy-eight, blah, 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 blah. It, it's colloquially, I can't pronounce that word, but, uh, in the, in normal discussion, we're just gonna say you can't short-term rent it. We're not gonna give you a short-term rental license with an ADU. And actually, we go a step further that if somebody, in this language, draft language, if somebody builds an ADU, they're forfeiting their right to do short-term rentals entirely. So you couldn't even do the principal dwelling unit as a short-term rental. And the worry behind that was if somebody builds an ADU, they're gonna move into that and then rent their main house, and that wasn't the goal either, so.
So if somebody brought in a visiting nurse to care for a family member or whatever, the person didn't work out and they left in thirty-five days, you couldn't rent it again if it were set at ninety days?
Um, per the ordinance, that's correct. Um, yeah.
Okay, so there, there could be some problems with that. I mean, I, I don't have a problem with ninety days, but, um, as I look at getting older, I might get fussy. I don't want taking care of, no. But seriously, um, it could be a problem.
So, I mean, just to go back to the high-level view, whenever we craft ordinance language, and I know I've said it a thousand times, we're looking for clear intent, practicality, and enforceability. The clear intent is we don't wanna have short-term rentals in ADUs. I think that's been widely discussed from public and from the commissioners. Uh, practicality, we did that with linking that to an existing ordinance, and that's where that thirty days come from. Enforceability, like anything, i- it's hard to prove if somebody's staying there for forty-five days or if they're staying there for thirty days. It, it's doable, and our enforcement staff is great and will execute that as well as they can. It, it's just a matter of justifying why we're putting that date. Right now, our justification is because the township recognizes short-term rentals as less than thirty days. That's our justification. If we say that's not a good enough justification, we need to make it ninety days or sixty days because we're that fearful of having transient guests, then that's our explanation for it. And then we'll, uh, our enforcement staff will enforce it just like any, any other day length that we have.
I think it's a good point, though, um, and I wouldn't want to limit somebody. If we were to require that for somebody to stay in an ADU, they had to sign a ninety-day lease, um, leases can get terminated for a variety of reasons, and if a lease did get terminated, then it would seem to me to be reasonable if they'd be able to lease it again right away. Um, and I don't know how we would include that language, but I think if we just required a minimum ninety-day lease, that might take care of it.
I, I think, and not to speak for my enforcement staff or our enforcement staff, but most likely, they would try to establish a pattern of behavior. So if that happens once and a neighbor calls and complains that somebody was only there twenty-five days, there probably is gonna be some discussion to that homeowner of, hey, this is how the rules are listed. Now, if they do it repeatedly, then that's obviously shows a pattern of behavior. Uh, again, I don't wanna speak for enforcement staff, but I would imagine that's how we handle it. We strive heavily for compliance, um, and, you know, some people just aren't aware that we're zoned in general, and then if they, they aren't aware, we need to educate them, and if they do it repeatedly, then I think that's when, um, you know, further action
Personally, I don't have a problem with ninety days, but I wanna make sure we're not paying problems for what the intent is of, you know, why we have this housing.
I agree with that on that. Would you make changes to this if this had become a part of the public hearing?
Um, as long as the changes are minor in nature, uh, does not have to come between another public hearing. And honestly, if the change was changing that from thirty days to ninety days, we could call that out in our resolution, um, as you either recommend or don't recommend it to the board with this minor change, and then we wouldn't have to hold another public hearing. Public hearing would be have to, so version one had changed significantly enough that I felt from version two that we had to hold a second public hearing, and that's because we had detached, detached, different definitions that came through. This is just a, uh, a day length that would change, so I don't think so. I think we'd be within the state statute to move it forward.
I understand the concern of the short term. I don't know that it's really gonna be a problem at thirty days. I don't see people wanting to support the families. I think that's a stretch, but I'm okay either way, I guess.
I, I think my only concern would be the enforceability stuff that Cody was talking about, that we could be putting some kind of burden on our staff to eventually have to figure out the term of how long somebody's staying there, and we could get some claims that we're not enforcing it accurately, because I've been watching that neighbor over there, and there was somebody different that came in and out, it just, it seems a little, but they'll be doing that with thirty days, I'm sure, but we, we'd be more concerned about that with thirty days because that would, could be a short-term rental that we'd wanna address. I think if it was like a different person showing up on day forty-five, I don't know that we'd be really all that concerned. And, and then I guess a couple other things I was thinking is that, uh, you're probably not gonna have a lease for your parents if they're living in there. You're probably just gonna have them living there, and, uh, and if you needed to evict a family member from there, I think they would be considered to have a thirty-day term to their lease because they would be sort of a, uh, like a holdover tenancy, and so you'd have to give them a thirty-day notice to quit, which would then be, well, was this a thirty-day term or was this a ninety-day term? I guess, it just gets a little confusing for me, but I really don't have any problem with increasing it to ninety either, I think.
Well, the nice thing is they won't be able to establish residency.
They would.
They would?
Sure. I thi- I think we had talked about that a little bit, that there's a, it creates a, uh, P R E issue for the property owner if they're not utilizing.
The P R E could get it from a legal, state residency, I'm sure you don't have it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's, residency is, has a hundred different definitions.
Yes.
Even with a thirty-day, whatever we decide to make it or not.
The township wouldn't enforce somebody's claimed residency. That would be a, uh, yeah, police issue or civil issue, I guess. Um, the reason, I guess, to expand further on why that thirty days was chosen is because it mirrors something we already have on the books and something we already enforce. So if the turnaround is happening less than that and they, A, don't have a short-term rental license, they're violating that ordinance, and then B, if it's an ADU, they're also violating the zoning ordinance. So it, it mirrors, um, that's why that was chosen. If the seven of you or majority of the seven of you decide that ninety days is better, we can come up with a system to police that as well.
It sounds like, from your perspect, from your perspective, thirty days is fine.
From, from an administrative staff standpoint, it's more straightforward to tell my enforcement staff, hey, anything longer than thirty days is a long-term rental, anything shorter than thirty days is a short-term rental. If I then have to train my enforcement staff that, well, anything longer than ninety days is a long-term rental, but if it's between thirty and ninety days, it could be a long-term rental or a short-term rental if it's in the zoning ordinance, it, it makes it a little sticky. Um, that said, the, the zoning ordinance and police power ordinances are completely separate, so if the seven or majority of the seven of you feel that that is a better reflection of the desires of the township, I have no problem figuring out how to enforce it. That's what we're here for, so.
Well, I, I think part of our motive is, is not to overburden staff with enforcement issues.
I, I, I agree with you. I, I think the, the more language that we can have mirror how we already conduct ourselves is more straightforward, uh, but I don't wanna limit the seven of you from changing something if you think that it's much more important to have a longer timeframe there.
Is this something that if it were, um, accepted by the Board of Trustees, passed or brought into effect, that that could be, if we saw problems with this, that we could change it in the future?
Of course.
Okay. In, in your, you, you spoke with other supervisors, planners. Was there any attention drawn to anything like that, time limit, any issues?
Not that I remember offhand. Let me, um, pull up a document real quick, but I'm, I didn't do a, um, like a dual analysis on which neighbor, uh, neighboring communities allow ADUs and S T Rs, because not everybody that allows short-term rentals allows ADUs and vice versa. Um, but Almyra Township, Blair Township allow short-term rentals in their ADU. East Bay, Green Lake, and Paradise do not. Um, and I don't know about Fife Lake because they, um, have changed their zoning ordinance since we did the analysis here. So, I, I mean, every community does it a little differently. Uh, out of everybody I talked to, nobody threw that out as a red flag. Um, the, they more had comments on permitted or conditional or what districts to put it in, those types of things. Um, but again, we already police short-term rentals at thirty days, we already have staff dedicated with more than half their time working on that, so it'd just be a continual effort to do so.
So I, I, you know, I'm obviously Mr. Chris and Bart this group here. I, uh, I had some great discussion with you, but I, I just think that this is opening up indoors, but I do, I wish you would support the enormity, I guess, that we both would be saying. to support the enormity, I guess, that we both would be saying more. And I would say I'm with the township board for 20 years. The one and only hall from the public that I've had that's supported us was a conversation at Tina Rafferty's, since I've got a point out of the planning commission. I understand and I completely appreciate that there's some new circumstances in the community where people want to have this option. I'm sympathetic to that. But I just don't see how allowing this all perform in parcels essentially township-wide and potentially changing the same thing in nature of somebody's neighborhood set at that place for 40, 50, 60, 70 years, despite the benefits, is really unfair. It's definitely fire. You know, huge crowd tonight. I'm not allowed to be in the fantasy position. I thought even, you know, maybe shame on me, because I've done a little degree in this stuff, some of the, I guess, how far along some of these discussions have come. But I think I'm a little more informed about township activities and their ever since. And I was not aware that how close this was to being proper as an ordinance. But I will say, one of the chief complaints, one of the number one complaints that we've received in recent years that come to township board, I don't know if they probably won first place, there's been mid-short term. It's created a few false problems. It's been neighbors against neighbors. It's required neighbors to act as soon as they're neighbors at their own expense. More months than not recently, we've come to the township board and how very wide by dominance, you know, here the ones that have made a lot of health. We call my team as an example of what they've dealt with. There are two or subdivision, some of them have touched that time. They have one rental. Didn't go out. You know, some of the things that they shared with us were quite concerning. You know, so you kind of look at the short-term rentals, it's kind of a 2013 version of what we might be looking at with the ADUs here. But, you know, a couple of things that I guess just to add points to try to get myself up to speed on some of these things is, you know, the idea that this is a law and move the needle on our portfolio housing crisis, and we have X deals, Y, Z. That's what people, they always drive with the bus and you talk to them, President, it's actually giving them their numbers to four hundred hours square foot for reconstruction. So, you know, somebody's going to build a small house, and it's going to be a rental. I'm sure some of our owners are, I understand that. My own mind, I was probably also here just jotting down what they said, go through these real quick. It's all pretty stable. You know, unlike short-term rentals, these ADUs, they're not going to require a license. So a lot of the things, the way that we've been able to police these shameful bad behaviors is by either revoking or not renewing their license. This would be essentially a use-by-right activity. There's not going to be this annual renewal license. And so we're going to have, it's safe to predict, you know, it's not one of the honors. But just in a number of complaints that the township is going to inherit, and we're going to have to follow up on it, once new structures are built, just asking people please and pretty please is permanent self, that that's not an effective way to deal with people that are acting irresponsibly. And then we will be adding that to that. Again, calling a range report, you know, they have deed restrictions to help them out in their situation there. I live in a private subdivision. I have no deed restrictions at all. So if I wanted to do something in my own subdivision, in terms of the fire that has been my entire legal counsel, and my neighbors to agree to it, I just don't think that that's a very fair burden for the people that I get that might not agree with the conditions or be a... I've heard that a lot of communities on the current CNI will be built, well, if only three of them are built in township, the ones across the street, I'm going to decide to do it. And I'll say that in the last four years, it's been a fact, but I don't think I'd be feeling too good about that. So just saying that hasn't happened. It's something else that I don't think they've really talked about is, there's nothing to say that somebody could come in and buy up every big parcel in the township and build to mold it. That's something that could happen, that likely happened, valid, but it could. I really don't think that that's what's the minds. We just don't...
Don't even live in it?
Don't even live in it? Well, it's another thing. I thought the short-term rentals, the idea that these are rented available. I mean, the term I see is people are now, because tax levels are so high here, they're renting rooms in houses. So you could end up with a two-room, say, accessory dwelling, you wouldn't be renting two individuals. So, you know, two more cars are going to be driving. There's two more dumpsters in the street. It's a little, a little too much. I can't speak for the other people on the township board, but I just don't think that this is going to get supported in township board. So I would strongly suggest before anything that happens on a planning project, that there be some better dialogue between the planning commission and the township board if they can just sit there and vote. I'm very tired. I don't think there's anything except the name, the change of vote, but definitely people know on this, and definitely will be backing strongly against this if one of the...
All righty. Who else has comments?
I think in theory, it's a great idea. I'm all for attached to the primary home if somebody wanted to, you know, make some extra space for their in-laws or their, you know, senior citizens they have to take care of. I think that makes more sense. It's more controlled, owner-occupied.
Well, we do have it as owner-occupied.
I understand that.
One or the other.
I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's, I don't agree with the attached, because I drove around today looking at properties and seeing what was out there. And there's opportunity, plenty of room on some properties. And give the example, like, I don't know if Springsteen's property, but Lloyd Morris' property. If you had, I don't know what they have, five or 10 acres, 10 acres, and then you have to attach it to the house, it just crowds that house. It doesn't make good use of the property. So I'm not agreeing on the attached thing.
Yeah. In that case, you might have to split the property or something.
Well, I don't, I don't understand why you'd want to split the property. And that not, and I don't think in their case, they could split the property. And for example, I mean, I have two, two and a half acres, and it wouldn't make sense to put an ADU in with the house or attached to the house. It's just not good use of the property. But, you know, and there's a number of properties out there like that.
I'm sure there's variables on every property. That's just, that's just how I feel about it. To keep uniformity in the community and less, less headaches and problems. Half of them may be fine, and there won't be any problems with it. But with the short-term rental issues, and I just, I'm all for attached units.
Yeah, I think it's important that we don't conflate the short-term rental issue with the ADUs, because they are two dramatically different situations. The abuse that happens in neighborhoods, I'm dead set against STRs, because I think it destroys community. And for me, the primary goal, for me, even as a developer, is to create community and to foster community. I think that's what makes a home enjoyable to live in. I have, one of the developments that I worked on, I went back five years later, and there was a little kid riding around on his bicycle. And I said, what do you like best about living here? Because this was a net zero community and, you know, conformed to all my ideas of what a development should look like. And he said, it's the neighbors. And that means we were really successful. And I think that's what we want to do here. I don't see ADUs as doing anything but building community. I mean, there, a certain amount of them are going to be rented, and I think that's a valid use. A certain amount of them are going to house elderly parents. A certain amount of them are going to house kids who haven't grown wings yet. I think those are excellent ways to foster community and to foster family. And I think this is a really good idea. When you look at the feedback throughout the country, they're just, the possibility for abuse exists, but I just don't hear about it. I don't hear, what I hear is that in the townships where this type of ordinance has been introduced, not enough people are taking advantage of it.
I think, from my perspective, you know, I think it's a good thing that we're looking at this. I think that, you know, we've, we have limits, size limits. I mean, I don't, you're not going to have a two 2,500 square foot dwellings on a lot. You know, you'll have the main dwelling and then a smaller unit for people that choose to pursue this. And I think having the, you know, the ability, you know, the diversity in housing types is important. I think, you know, I mean, this is in the master plan that the board adopted. So I, I mean, it's been talked about for some time. So I don't, I don't think, you know, saying there hasn't been any discussion about it is a little bit, you know, there has been, so.
I don't want to say there hasn't been any discussion about it. As I said earlier, shame on me for not realizing that things are, have gone as far as they have, and having not participated in that. But just using myself as an example, I don't get anyone in one. And so I, if this is what being proposed, I guess, I'll be very shocked if it gets supported.
And we, I mean, over the past year, there has been, you know, numerous public members that have been outspoken at our meetings about it. So most of the comments that we've heard have been for more intense uses, I think. So I think we're, we're kind of toning it down on what has been asked for. So that's just my, my observations and perspective.
I just want to vote, and I only acknowledge, I am new to the party here, you know, so going in other direction, if you feel makes sense, but I just, I can't support this. So or I have a grievance for it itself.
On a slightly different subject, I do have another question. A couple, a few people have brought up the issue of having somebody build, well, in the case of STRs, build an STR in the neighborhood, and when they're not allowed by the homeowners association, and the homeowners having to personally sue. I'm wondering if it would make sense to provide something in the ordinance that just says that this does not override homeowner bylaws.
So that might make more sense in the application documentation, because I guarantee you, nobody reads the ordinance before they submit an application. And the other problem is, is we don't enforce any HOA rules or deed restrictions regardless of if it's STR, ADU. If you have an HOA that says everybody has to have a yellow door, everybody has to have a yellow door, the township has no stake in that. So it'd be better suited for us to put somewhere on our application, and we have talked about that previously. So that might benefit us, because there's definitely some HOA rules, and we can get way in the weeds that are illegal or the township. The township's not a partner in that agreement, so we don't have any enforcement over it. But making folks aware is a good education piece for us, and we can put that on applications. And that goes for fences and sheds and everything else. So, yeah, we can definitely do that.
And that, application information, if we get to that point, that's something that staff can...
Yeah, we can do that without any sort of state process to follow, I guess, right with you. We, I don't know if ROEO hasn't implemented that yet, but that was a discussion previously of adding that to our... So for those who couldn't hear Matt, because he's not mic'd, he's asked if we already did it for our short-term rental. We had our legal team draft up a, it's like a paragraph, but basically says we don't have any enforcement of capability over HOA or deed restrictions, so.
Do I make sure to ask every single person that calls for this stuff, I tell them, give them the reason for that, so I make sure everybody knows. And I tell them that they've been getting sued and they've been losing, so I'm sure.
Our, our staff is very good at communicating with residents, especially when there's an issue like this. So Matt and Ken, our OEO, are very upfront about things like that. So folks, because if we're not upfront with them, in the long run, it comes back on our desk, because we have to enforce it anyway. So we try really hard to be upfront with people.
So we're still deliberating, or we can move it along or not? I guess we're...
I think I've been inclined to move it along, or at least put it up to a vote. I think we've worked on this long enough. And I honestly never really know what the township board is going to think about some of this stuff, but it was in the master plan. I think that went through the township board to be approved. And so that's sort of the guideline that we've been, you know, we're trying to kind of check those boxes and go through. And I think this was a good effort. And honestly, if the township board isn't interested, I think that's fine. I think that's, you know, it's the, it's unfortunate to have worked on something that much, but really, I don't, I'm not hearing a lot of changes that we would make. So I would think unless we think that we should step back and try to massage it a little more, but I don't know that that's a, yeah, I do, I think that if the, if there's opposition against it, it's not going to pass, and I think that's just it. And maybe we revisit it someday. But I guess that's my thought about it.
So just, the board can, they can...
So let me walk through your procedureally real quick, because that confuses a lot of folks. So the reason why we're here tonight even is because the township board appointed a planning commission to deal with zoning-related issues. So that's why you guys see applications and those types of things. And that's why zoning changes, zoning ordinance changes start with you. So procedurally, how that works is if the seven of you, or the majority of the seven of you, have a zoning ordinance change you would like to see, your responsibility is to either recommend or not recommend that change to the township board. So there's a draft resolution that I typed up for you in your packet, and it's a recommendation resolution basically saying, hey, here's the zoning ordinance language we made. We're recommending to the township board to adopt this into the zoning ordinance. So we're a recommending body. So there's a couple ways you can do that. You can either recommend adoption of the draft ordinance language as is. You can recommend adoption of the draft ordinance with minor amendments. Or you can just straight up deny adopting or recommending that adoption to the township board. And because it's not an application, it would just end the conversation at our level and wouldn't go to the township board. So those are kind of your three options. Once it goes to the township board, they would be able to further deliberate the zoning ordinance. And if they have changes they would like to see from you, they have the option to send it back to the planning commission and say, hey, we denied this one because we didn't like X, or we denied it because we don't agree with ADU's entirety. Whatever the reasoning, I'm going to encourage, if this goes to the township board, I'm going to encourage them to justify their explanation so that the seven of you are aware, so that staff's aware on, you know, either changes they'd like to see, or if it moves past them and then adoption. So basically, the question in front of you tonight is, are you going to recommend adoption to the township board? And if so, are you going to recommend adoption as presented, or are we going to make slight amendments to them? Or are you going to kill the conversation until a later date when we, if you choose to deny that? So I realize I kind of rambled a little bit, but that's a process that's set out by the state for us to move things forward and come to a decision. Is there any questions on process?
Does it come in the form of a, someone asked you, recommend that?
So it has to come in the form of a resolution. And basically, the resolution's just a fancy way of a formal decision. So it's going to be a roll call vote instead of a, or what's a, what's it called with everybody? Voice vote, thank you. And they do that for clarity and also for formality, so.
Does it require a motion?
It does, yes. Motion in a second.
So you're, you provided this, this is the resolution that you drafted?
Yes, sir. And you'll notice that there's a couple blank spots in there because I didn't... I didn't know whether you guys were going to recommend it or not recommend. So the wording is kind of sticky, but if you read through it, it'll explain, let's just run through it real quick because this is one of the first ones I've done with you guys. So the top part's just the header explaining who we are and what we're talking about. And then it says at a regular meeting, which is today, who is here, who is not here. Everybody's here tonight. And then the whereas's are basically the statements in the state law that allow us to be a zoning body. So we're looking to promote health, safety and general welfare of the township. We're looking to amend our ordinance to regulate accessory dwelling units. And whereas we held a public hearing today, therefore be resolved. And then that's where you guys come up with either your recommendation or not recommending to the board the adoption of the zoning ordinance. And then it'd be moved by somebody, seconded by somebody. And then Heidi will count up our As and Nays and our absents. And then if it passes, it goes to the board. If it doesn't pass, we file it away as a declined resolution. And then we move forward with other issues that the planning commission would like to address. And lastly, Tim signs it if you adopt it. So, or if you don't adopt it, Tim also signs it.
So with this draft resolution, I guess I'm looking for a motion to either recommend approval or recommend denial to the board of this zoning ordinance amendment.
I'll make a motion. Are you prepared?
Yeah.
A motion to deny resolution 09-25-15 on accessory dwelling units.
Support.
So we have a motion by Murphy and support by Wagner to deny recommending ZOA 09-25-03 to the township board. Is there further discussion on that motion? So then, can I get a roll call on that motion, please?
Murphy? Yes. Figuera?
Oh, no.
Warren?
No.
Butt?
No.
Wagner?
Yes.
Paulson?
No.
Andrew Shea?
No.
No absence.
So that motion failed. Five noes to guesses. Okay. Is there another motion perhaps?
I move, we approve resolution number 092515.
I support.
So we have a motion by Paulson and support by Wine to recommend approval of, you said 09-25-03?
15.
There's two different numbers. So the resolution number is 15 and the ADU zoning ordinance number is 03. It's, you know, anything but clear.
I think the intent's clear.
Yes, please.
Paulson?
Yes.
Wagner? Butt?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Figuera?
Yes.
Murphy? No. Andrew Shea?
Yes.
So that motion to recommend approval is approved, five to two. All right. Good discussion, everybody. Hear about it from the board, I don't know. Moving on, pending business, we have none. New business, we have none. Brief public comments.
Don't fight over it, guys.
Okay, it's me again. So one of the things I just wanted to say while I was listening to you all talking, and I realized as I read it, I knew it was unclear, but it became more unclear. And so maybe it's part of the application process. But what's, so I can put, I'm redoing some things, parts of my basement, okay? I can put a kitchen in my basement, right? Yep. As long as I do what I'm supposed to do. And that just sits there, right? So, but what if at some point I decide one of my grandkids should live there? Or I decide that somebody should come and live with me, right, to help take care of us? Those aren't going to be rental agreements. So I guess the question is, it isn't clear like at what point I apply. Is it when I'm building it? Is it when I'm going to use it a certain way? Anyway, those were the things that, like when you were talking, I kind of realized that this doesn't talk about that at all. Thank you.
Thanks, Tina.
Chris Crew, 3016 Collier. In response to Dan's comment about the short-term rentals and having some way to track it, it seems we have a process in place. So if you had to make another box on the, the application for short-term rental that says, I have an ADU, it would seem that that process exists and could be adapted to handle ADUs in the future, not just short-term rentals. You wouldn't have to create anything new. Might put more burden on somebody to follow through with it, but there's something that works because you guys are able to go out and police all the, the short-term rentals when bad things happen.
Thanks, Chris. All right, we'll close that public comment period at 6:55. Reports. Dan, Township Board.
Township Board, currently the hottest topic right now is it's a budget season. So Ron's busy at work with that. But really, it's probably kind of outdoor here. So I was asked by our, our unit that oversees our services department for the major adjustments. So we have a garden bushy, it's not a ton of a couple of times. Other than formal, we have a preaching here. So I'm trying to correct it. It's a very much private budget. The situation, everybody's in town, it's not a problem. And the wages, they just haven't got the stuff.
Good. Next thing. ZBA? Max?
It's been relatively quiet on the ZBA. We've not had a case since our last meeting. We do have a case for October.
All right. Cody?
Yeah, I have two items. The first is at the last planning commission meeting, we had, we had a quorum, but there were some members absent. Our discussion was regarding activity centers and the uses that are currently in local business district. It was informally decided at the last meeting to wait until we hear back from the road commission, which should be in October regarding roundabout or peanut-shaped roundabout on the east-long, north-long straight road intersection. And then maybe hold a study session meeting after we know a little bit more about timeline and clarity there. So I will make sure to reach out to the road commission and try to have an update for you at your next meeting here in October. In the meantime, the homework that was taken away from that is commissioners discuss taking a look at Article 15, which is local business district, and jotting down whether or not they see incompatible uses or uses that aren't listed that need to be adjusted. So we can address that here further once we get ready for a study session, but just to bring everybody up to speed on that. The second item I have for you in my report is we have three meetings left in a year for regular scheduled meetings, October 28th, November 25th, and December 23rd. Staff will not be available for you on November 25th. So you have a few options if you'd like. You can either keep your November 25th meeting without staff support. You can move your November 25th meeting to a different date when staff may be available, which would most likely be early December. Or you can consolidate your November and your December meetings to a meeting in early December because December 23rd is relatively close to the holidays. And I know most folks probably want to be spending time with family on that. So those are your options. We do have to make an adjustment to, if we do decide to move a meeting, we have to make that adjustment during a meeting. So I'd be looking for somebody to make a motion to adjust that or make a motion to staff, bring back potential dates at our October meeting to make that adjustment if you so choose. But just to recap, your options are to keep your November 25th meeting without staff support, move it to another date, or consolidate, consolidate your November and your December meeting. So give some thought about that. And then if we could just have some direction for staff, we can either bring back dates for you in October, or we can keep the meeting as is. So I'd look for some direction on that.
Do we expect to have the report from the road commission before the October meeting?
We may. It's hard to say. They're also waiting on FHWA. So they're waiting on federal. And federal is usually a longer timeline than county, which is usually longer than township. So we'll see. Theoretically, we should know within the first couple of weeks of October. So yes, hopefully by our October meeting, I'll have that included in our packet so we can tell them.
Do we, do we want to move the meeting to the 18th or the, yeah, I guess it'd have to be the 18th, it'd be the week before?
You, you mean move up November?
Mm-hmm.
Or, what about December? Do we want to, yeah, it's kind of a.
So as far as actual dates, I'll have to check meeting hall availability because we do have ZBA who meets and Township Board and potentially other associations that have rented the hall. So if, you won't have it in November, maybe December. So I, I guess I would just be looking at how you'd like to handle that. And I can bring you dates in October and we can make that final decision then if you'd like. Or if you want to sit here and everybody hash out their calendars, I guess we could do it that way too. But it might be more efficient to just have a general approach and we can work on timeframes.
I guess I, personally, I wouldn't, I mean, if we combined November, December and looked for a, a date, you know, between the two, that'd be my preference. That's why I was.
Okay, is that, I don't know if we necessarily need a vote for that. Neither, neither the state statute or our planning commission bylaw specify a process for this. So.
I guess we're not changing the date yet. So I guess.
Okay. But it sounds like, I've heard a few people mention consolidating November, December. Is that what the majority of you agree on?
And make that decision in October, you're sure? So you'd be looking at services available?
Yeah, I'd find available date for you and then let you do it that way.
Why don't we look at combining them and make that decision October?
Okay. I'll find some available dates and bring that for you guys in October then. And also hopefully bring a update from the road commission. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Cody. Correspondence, we received three items. Two were email support for the ADU ordinance and then a notice from Blair Township, I guess was that.
Yeah, so the notice from Blair Township is they're reworking on their master plan. So state law, like we did with our sub-area plan, requires them to notice every adjacent jurisdiction. So staff hasn't had the time to review that, but they did send that to the planning commission. So if anybody is interested in looking at what Blair's doing with their master plan, they will have theirs available for us to make public comment on if we as a commission, or sorry, you as a commission would like to make a formal comment, we can, we can do that in our October meeting and still get it over to them in time. So I encourage you to take a look at that if you'd like. But they did send that to you guys to review.
Commissioner comments? Sherry?
I have a question for Cody. The AUD that was approved by the planning commission tonight, does that go to the next township board?
I don't know if it'll be on their next schedule. I'll have to check with Ron to see on his agenda availability. But most likely it'll be the next meeting, which is second week, second week of October, or it's going to be in November, depending on how big of a agenda they have and what they can fit in their schedule.
Thank you.
It will be noticed too. So if you're interested in attending, just keep an eye out on the board or at our documents on demand. They'll have it listed there for you.
Thank you.
I don't have any other comments. Look for a motion adjourned since we're to that point.
So move.
Support.
Moved by Sherry and support by Dan to adjourn the meeting at 7:05. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everybody.